My.
Mine's probably.
Cameron is excused prior notice. She had to go to Chicago.
Oh, all right.
I had this. Which one is it?
It's that data. It's that C P A. Okay, you got it.
Yes.
Oh, I have it.
Do I have it? If not, there should be one at Cameron's if you want to grab it.
I do.
What do you need?
Good afternoon again. We'll call this meeting to order. Since we've, since we've had the pledge in moment of silence before, let's start with roll call, please.
Commissioner Kramer.
Present.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Present.
Commissioner Rexroth.
Present.
Chairman Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Ross is absent prior notice. Commissioner Alguier.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
Thank you. At this time, we have a public comment, three minutes, if you'd like to speak. Bill?
It's heavy. It's down there.
I thought it was funny.
Oh, yeah, it was pretty funny.
Well, we're here for a little township and, you know, to have trust. Nothing goes forward without trust, right? Well, the machines are not trusting. And so, I mean, one person, one ballot, one vote, one thing. Just a little bit more about this movie. Glad so many of you took it. This is like a typical, I suppose, clerk or coworker watcher. I'll be, uh... They look at three claims about the E. Paul books in the movie. How of them? Then they give evidence to distribute them all. Three claims about the ballot. Ballot and marker claims on the bottom. They're all laid out. This is true, this is true, this is true. And it gives evidence to show that they're all false. And then it goes on to this guy. Uh, it's kind of hard to see his picture there. But he looks a lot like Eric Hoover. And that, uh, machine there on the picture is called the Dominator 5000. He looks a lot like our Dominion machine. Anyway, he lists, uh, three claims: no remote access, impossible to flip votes, post-election canvas, and all of those. They give evidence to distribute. And it goes on to this guy. Looks a lot like John Follis, who is the owner of Dominion, that guy. And he gives evidence to bring up the big guns with him. And those are all discounted too. Just starting to this Tina Peters article. She was being sued. She's a clerk in Mason County. She's the one that backed up the computers to save the data so it wouldn't be erased. She's not... She's, she's being taken to court. Uh, it just, uh, this, this article is from the 6th of February. And you can find it on joehofft.com. And there's also an article on the 7th, the follow-up. She had COVID. She had to get a new lawyer. Her case was supposed to start like right now. Uh, but it's going to be delayed until July. She's not being taken to court for the bad evidence about the machines. She's taken to court because they said she was, um, manipulating one of the other workers in backing up the machine. So it's not saying that her evidence was wrong. Um, and I'm almost out of time, so I'll continue on that and another topic at the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Any commissioner comment? Okay, we have two items on our agenda today. And the first item is, uh, on the Beta. And Michelle received today, uh, the filing from the, the Beta Authority. And she has agreed to review that real quickly. And then Deb has a recommendation and request.
Um, so, under the statute, as clerk to the Board of Commissioners services, generally made on me, sometimes the chair of the board. Um, so it was made. Jen's there as my chief deputy. That's fine. So we were served with a complaint that's filed in Grand Traverse County of Bay Area Transportation versus Grand Traverse County defendant and Leilinaw County as a necessary party defendant. So being served today, and it was in-person service. We'll start the 21-day count for service. And, um, the administrator will have her information. And we just spoke briefly that we will also send it to MMRMA, and I'll work with the administrator. Because I don't think, since she's been here, that this has occurred, that that's a procedure that we need to do too. And it can be done concurrently, of course.
Thank you. Deb?
I've got a copy if you need it, but it's just thick. So we'd have to copy the whole thing.
But in the original suit, is Grand Traverse any later on?
Well, great. And it, we are, we are listed as a defendant, but we're titled "necessary party defendant." And I have not sat here to write the whole complaint, but that would make sense.
And Deb has, Deb has checked with our obligation and our, our responsibility. I think talked to Nate at Grand Traverse County. And, uh, so we, we are going to need to proceed, and Deb has a recommendation.
So what you have in front of you, the EDS, it was not part of the original packet. So, um, it should be in front of you right now. And this is a follow-up to the previous discussion that we've had in terms of reaching out to Micah Myers' attorneys. Um, they are out of Manistee, and they also have offices in Lansing and in Grand Rapids, and I think Detroit also, and several others. So this was a recommendation from the prosecutor to reach out. And the challenge that we've had is trying to find local attorneys that don't have a conflict with Grand Traverse County. And in that case, they would not be able to represent us in litigation. So there are other attorneys who are willing to look at the contract. But if we go to litigation, they would not be able to represent us. So that's why we've had to look out of the area specific. So that's where we are on this and, and why we are recommending this. And so in the packet that was sent out, you do have, um, the information that was provided in terms of the agreement letter. Um, and the EDS here just basically speaks to now, this is, originally it was a notice of motion. Now it's actually moved forward to being named in the case. So, um, it's, we're moving in the direction where we will need to secure counsel. And, um, they are aware, um, standing by. And so basically, the request would be to have the board approve, um, the chairman to, um, or the administrator to enter into an agreement with the legal firm, whichever the board would so choose. So I've put myself down, but whatever the preference would be.
And I know that a couple of you have asked a question about, well, what happens if we don't have legal authority and we let just, uh, Grand Traverse County fight it out with Beta? I understand that is not a possibility, not an option. Jamie, you want to speak to that?
Um...
Or anything?
No, I mean, I just, um, I don't know. I guess I'd be more... There's been a lot that I think we've talked about and gone over as far as Beta. But like, I'm here for anyone's concerns or questions. I'd be happy to answer to the best of my ability.
Right. I just have a problem on why Grand Tr... This is because of an action Grand Traverse took. Is that correct?
But where on the document?
Well, it would seem like we should have been sued of, you know, along with it. You know, maybe we do get the right attorney in motion to exclude us or separate us from the suit. I think it'd probably be the first thing I would see what we could do. I mean, what's our, what's our damages, you know?
That's, that's kind of where I was going to go as well. So to, to back up a little bit, so, uh, who initiated the lawsuit against Grand Traverse? Did Beta initiate a lawsuit against Grand Traverse? It, there was no, there was going to be no lawsuit. Okay. If they had, if they had stuck to the inter-local agreement, basically. What, where it was one commissioner and one, uh, community member. They decided to move forward. That's why we were on the pause. Right. Um, and they decided to go ahead and put two commissioners on, knowing full well that this was going to happen if they chose to do so. So that's where Beta was coming from. They let them know. They gave them a warning. And took that, so then Beta took action? No, and then, well, Beta took action after Grand Traverse County. After Grand Traverse, Grand Traverse took action and, and appointed. And appointed. So Beta then filed... Knowing that Beta would... Okay, so did the Beta Board vote then to hire and, or use their attorney and then file this lawsuit? Did your board vote to do that? Did the board vote to... Did, did you, did they as a board vote to, to start the lawsuit? Did the board? Beta?
The Beta Board.
The Beta Board is the one that's silly. Works there to move the party.
You'd think it would have to.
Yeah, I... Oh, gosh. We didn't have a meeting this last month because we were, we were all kind of waiting. Um, don't quote me on this, but I, I believe we talked about the... We didn't think Grand Traverse would come this far.
I know you were in a...
But, yeah.
I'm not, again, I'm going to state this. I am not an attorney. And I'm looking at this very quickly, okay? But, one, Leilinaw County is named as a necessary defendant. When you appoint an attorney, of course, your attorney is going to talk to all of you, probably in a closed session setting. Leilinaw County is named as a necessary defendant, and they're a political subdivision member of Beta. That's paragraph three. Paragraph 35 may address what you're asking here. It says, and this is just the complaint, so I'm simply reading from this document. Thirty-five. While, um, that did not occur, that prior 34 bullet points. In December, Beta passed a resolution authorizing the instigation of the dispute resolution process in the inter-local agreement and authorizing that the present action be filed should the dispute resolution process be unsuccessful. And that was a Beta Resolution 23-06, which is outlined in Exhibit 8. And that was resolution dated, um, December 7th. Again, I have not read it, but it is outlined here, and the administrator may know more about that.
So the action happened in December, and, and it was in place should Grand Traverse appoint? Yeah, and we were kind of just waiting for the next move. And we did put the pause on, like, they were, yeah, we tried. Okay, so, um, so, uh, we're listed as a necessary... Right, but what does that mean exactly? Um, because that's where I was going to go. Can we waive our... Can we waive, must we hire an attorney? Or can we waive our, um, defense in this case and allow the dispute to go on?
Deb has checked on that, so...
Yeah, actually, Michelle and I have talked about this too. And, um, I know, I'm not going to remember the term. But there is a term that if you don't have representation and you're named in the suit, you're leaving yourself open for liability. So it would behoove us to have representation.
Yeah, but what the liability is, is that our liability would be that one of, either Beta or Grand Traverse is going to win. I mean, that's, that's our liability. Because there's really no damages. I, I doubt there's any.
One should never presume that you're named in a lawsuit. And even if the outcome is that Leilinaw County gets removed from the lawsuit, you may, you would really want to have an attorney representing you to get to that point.
I think, yes, we need to have an attorney represent and remove us from the lawsuit. Because it was not, it was not our action that started this.
I don't, and I, and that's kind of, exactly. So obviously, I can see, I, I don't mind having a... So maybe if this is... If this is, of all today is, is just to engage this guy so he can explain all this to us and tell us how we can get out of it, then that's, that's fine.
Get an objection.
But, you know, I don't, because I, I, I understand. I guess I would have to look at this as like, what's the worst-case scenario? Worst-case scenario is a seven-person board?
I think just as your clerk, I've got to say this.
Deb Rexroth wants to speak.
Am I going too far? You've got to be careful. You've got a pending lawsuit against you. And you really should be exercising the Open Meetings Act and determining what you should actually be discussing in this open forum versus a closed session with a potential attorney. So I don't want to see you go too far.
Get into the, don't get into weeds, basically.
Don't get into weeds. All right.
Looking for a motion.
I move.
So just to follow up, I think that it is prudent to move to retain an attorney, and then further actions would be determined by his review of our situation, such that, you know, maybe some of the actions proposed would be appropriate. But I think it is inappropriate to not have any representation at this point. Because none of us have read the complaint or can consider all of the possible outcomes that might come out of the court case. So I will support that.
Commissioner Kramer?
Uh, I move to recommend that the County Board of Commissioners authorize the county administrator to enter into an engagement agreement with the legal firm, Mica Myers PLC, as outlined in the proposed engagement agreement.
Support.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I haven't seen the proposed engagement agreement, and that's kind of where I was going. I don't know the extent of our obligation to this, to this. Is it, is it as minimal as we can have one closed session and discuss our options? Or is this till the end of this suit? I, what is the engagement?
So the engagement letter was in the packet. It was mailed out or emailed out. Um, there was a packet sent out earlier this week. And it had the actual engagement. No, no, this is...
Who was this sent from?
Me.
The attorney.
We got it in a packet.
Yeah, I was there.
No, I think, is anybody, does everybody else, yeah?
No, we, we got it.
We got it.
So that's the...
Okay, because if I missed it, just one...
It just outlines, outlines the terms and the costs and, um, and the ability to, to move forward, so...
Commissioner Rexroth?
Well, it's being reviewed. I think, though, it would still be appropriate to advise after we retain that we expect to take the minimum actions required to protect our interests. And I think that could be given as a directive by the administrator to move forward and say, this is what we're looking for. We just, we're just trying to make sure we're not in trouble on something. I, I agree generally, like, I'm not wanting to get in a fight, but, uh, we need to protect our interests. So whatever the minimum amount he needs to do to advise us there.
Well, the worst-case scenario is when that Beta succeeds in their lawsuit, and then we have court costs that we have to pay.
Yeah.
That's why.
Or you never know. I mean, there's a...
You know, to, and our attorney will be able to tell us where we're at, where we're going, what our exposure is, and how we get out.
Yep.
So we have a motion. Are we ready to vote on that motion?
Yes. So...
Commissioner Lautner?
Since it includes... Since it includes travel, we can meet by, by teleconference with the gentleman. We're, I don't want to pay him to drive up from Grand Rapids?
Manistee, they said, didn't you? That's 65 miles from here.
Okay, this has Grand Rapids. Is he out of...
He's out of the Manistee office.
Oh, he's out of the, their Manistee office. From Manistee. Okay, that's not terrible. Okay.
I think we can just, uh, request the administrator to spend as little money as, as necessary to protect our interests and do the job and trust it. She will do that.
Okay, so it looks like it's strictly hourly. Without a contract, right?
Yeah, it was, it's not a retainer. It's hourly. Okay, special counsel.
So all those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six, zero. Thank you.
Thank you for researching that.
Yes. The, uh, second item on our agenda, and it's listed as a closed session. That's a possibility. I'd like to kick this off with, uh, hearing from Doug on the Finance Committee this morning. And then, uh, we can have discussion on that if you'd like. And then we would entertain a motion to go into closed session if that's the wish of the board. It is, uh, my wish and Deb's wish. So Doug?
So, uh, just for the benefit of the public, there wasn't here, and those committee members, I didn't do a pass out, but I'm just going to read what I presented at the Finance Committee this morning, which was the basis of our entire discussion. It was a fairly brief meeting. It was done quickly. But for the benefit of those here, and if you have any questions, please feel free. So I start out by, uh, restating the subcommittee guidelines. They should be given a specific, well-defined task by the entire board. Their privilege should not extend beyond a specific task given to them. And once a task is completed, they are retired until given another task. The committee's specific current task is to research the present and present to the full board options and strategies related to moving forward with the implementation of independent finance department. Any financial matters outside of this specific task are not ours to handle. We said we'd listen, deliberate, and advise. After listening to Mr. Armheim's presentation, and after discussion with staff members, the administrator and others having expertise in these matters, I have the following observations and suggestions to make to this committee. Obviously, our efforts in the past in this area have not been fruitful. This does not, however, diminish our determination to implement an independent finance department. That having been said, one definition of insanity is that we need to try the same methods and expect a different outcome. We need to try something different. We do not believe that the best long-term solution is to have two direct reports to the Board of Commissioners. And I think there's a typo in that, uh, there's a double knot, but, uh, but I make that clear. I don't believe that the best solution is to have two direct reports. Although, although that is our interim plan implemented for this transition, I do not think it provides for the best governance of Leilinaw County in the long term. I propose that our long-term plan consists of an administrator slash CFO with a finance department that reports to that position. This position will require both administrative and deep financial experience. The goal would be to provide strategic guidance to the implementation of the finance department and to the implementation of the recommendations outlined in the Reiman Report. In discussions with Chet Janik of MLI, he believes there are those out there that possess these qualifications and that they are available. In addition, and I don't have the map handy, I think I gave it to someone. I don't know if I got it, maybe back. But there's like 25, there are now 25 counties that, that engage a structure similar to this out of the counties in Michigan. I've had conversations with Administrator Allen in this matter, and to her credit, and as a testimony to her character, she has always stated she would do what is in the best interest of Leilinaw County and its residents and taxpayers. My recommendation opened up the further discussion by this committee. That was followed by this discussion of the committee members and a motion to move forward with this recommendation to the full board. So that's how we get to where we are.
So...
It would be appropriate to get the motion on the table, and then we can talk about it. And if we have legal questions about it, we can go into, uh, we do have a, a attorney-client privileged communication here.
I appreciate the thought that went into this and the collaboration. And the understanding of Administrator Allen of the difficulty we've had with this process. And I would move that we proceed with this recommendation.
Is there a second?
I don't know what her motion was. I can't hear her.
Oh, sorry. I'm getting all comfortable here. I would move that we proceed with this recommendation. You need more detail than that, don't you?
Have a second?
Do we need more detail? Do, do we need more detail for the motion?
Oh, that's what I was wondering.
Motion's going closed session to discuss?
That wasn't a...
Do you need a motion to go into closed session?
No, we've run it.
That will, that will follow.
For this motion first, for what you...
This motion first, because otherwise, there's no reason to go.
So the motion is to approve this doc, or accept this document you just read?
Yes.
Yeah.
To remove the recommendation to move forward with an administrator slash CFO position for the governance.
So we have a motion, and we support it?
I got it now.
Okay.
We need support.
I need support.
So it's been moved in seconds. Is there any discussion? All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
This time, it would be appropriate if you'd make a motion to go into closed session.
I would move that we go into closed session to discuss written attorney-client privilege for civil counsel per MCL 15.268, sub-paragraph H, ready administrative structure.
Support.
And, uh, I have, uh, I, I assume that this includes the administrator, and of course, the clerk will be there, so... Those will be the few people besides the board that'll be in, uh, in the meeting.
Are you talking about me?
You, you will be there.
You have no choice, yes.
Or your, or your representative, whatever, whoever you decide to be there.
Uh, could we vote on the motion to go into closed session?
Roll call.
Okay.
Commissioner Rexroth?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Alguier?
Yes.
Commissioner Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lautner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Yes.
Six, zero?
I'm ready to go to sleep, guys. I mean, I was right.
Oh, oh, you're going way too fast.
Roll call, I think.
We're going to have a regular vote come out.
No.
I turned the recording on.
No, doesn't need to be.
So we had a motion to resume open session, and that was made by Alguier. And who seconded that? Rexroth?
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
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 Motion approved, six, zero. Commissioner Rexroth?
I would move that this board approves a separation agreement with Administrator Allen as presented by counsel, and that we authorize Chairman Wessel to draft a letter of support and recommendation for Administrator Allen.
Support.
Any further discussion? All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved, five, one. Thank you. That ends our business, and it's now time for public comment. If we have anybody that wants to make public comment, you are welcome to do so.
You should do. See? How's it feel?
Alone?
Yeah. Yeah?
I could say something.
Yeah. Feels correct.
Well, the Commissioner Kramer has to leave to pick up a child, so she is going to...
We got your DVD, guys.
I switched to Ken Paxton, Attorney General from Texas, interview with Tucker Carlson. Got four minutes and 20 seconds. Maybe that's right. Georgia and Texas were even in 2016, right? Both won by eight percent. In 2020, Georgia fell. Texas still had eight percent. Because Ken Paxton prosecuted cases where they tried to do the mail-in ballots, just mailing out to everybody like they did in Michigan. So, let's see if I can find it here.
Oh, yeah. Two. Yeah.
Did you try?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, spread that, too.
I'm a crack a little late, so delicious extra-sharp jelly. We do things a little different. Carine cream for extra smoothness. The easy danger of violence before we shop this.
Ken Paxton, how mad Ken Paxton is.
The only managers present in overwhelming evidence.
A firing of acquittal is entered as to Article 1. Well, this is a resounding victory. Ken Paxton has survived.
Even better. So when they say you can't prove voter fraud, that's the system that they like. We can't prove voter fraud. It's a set of systems completely open. And that's what's happening in America. So that's why Georgia, which was...
Uh, you just have to start a little...
Mail-in ballot. What I know from mail-in ballot, and the fraud is for, for a lot of questions, when it's called, on mail-in ballots. And unfortunately, other states, they produce it not quite. I know that mail-in ballots are a conclusion of fraud.
You're right, you're sure, I'm gonna read it.
You have no idea the set of fraud. There's no error. When they say you can't prove voter fraud, they are right. Normally, what you have to do is you have a mail-in ballot. You get the statute of laws, and there's a certain way you're going to keep five or eight states, or you're disabled. You just have to, you sign an affidavit, and you send it in with your application, and your signature. And when you send your ballot, and your ballots, and that one, you sign that envelope with your signature, stick it out, and they verify the signature. Not that, it's kind of good as photo ID that we have all over, but it's still a something. But when you change it to mailing out to everybody, we have no idea.
Like, if you should get...
With no idea of voting. So when they say you can't prove voter fraud, that's the system that they like. Because we can't prove voter fraud. It's a set of systems completely open. And that's what's happening in America. So that's why Georgia, which most of us thought was a kind of conservative state, became one of the most black-witted states in the country, you believe, because of mail-in ballots. I sat there and looked at it, too. I told you, I told the president in, in May. I said, Mr. President, I had 12 lawsuits in the liberal counties. I'm losing it in every county because they sue the liberal county board. All the judges are liberal. Court of Appeals are liberal. I'm not happy. Find a way to get the Supreme Court, this circuit, before it's too late for the mail-in ballots out, or you won't win. I guarantee you, if Harris County can send out 2.7 million ballots, you want Texas to buy 600 ballots, you will not win. And if, if we have multiple counties doing that, they'll, they'll figure out how many ballots they need. We want everything to walk, every, all 12. And I told them, we just want to do that. He didn't believe it. He didn't lose. I said, you've got to watch this in other states, because this is happening in Texas, which it looks like it does, it's a national program. I can only focus on Texas, you better make sure this doesn't happen in other states. And sure enough, Georgia, which had the same margin of victory for Trump four years prior, they don't stop. The governor, the AG, they just let, they sign consent decree, and they have mail-in ballots, no signature verification, they have drop-off boxes, and they allow all these mail-in ballots. And guess what? Now Georgia, that had the same margin of victory for Trump, now suddenly, we have an eight or nine percent win for Trump by protecting the ballot lock. And Georgia, who loses by what, fourteen thousand, who loses in small now. And I knew when they stopped counting votes on election night, I'm sitting there watching, this is what they would have done in Texas. All the.
What was that about? With that? They stopped counting votes on election night?
Because what they needed is to figure out how many real votes there were, so they'd figure out how many mail-in ballots could apply to the election. That's what they would have done in Texas, I'm convinced.
So you think that was wrong?
But I have no doubt, having been through the.
Wasn't just a water leak?
It was definitely planned. I mean, it would have happened in Texas.
But can you just stop counting ballots on election night when you're watching TV? I know!
Have you ever seen that before, ever?
Well, you tell me, you're, you're a politician.
I've never seen it before in my life. I was like, I knew when they stopped, and it was, and Trump is leading all these states. I knew exactly, because there's no way that I would lose mail-in ballots, can anybody get a full ballot? Anyone? There's no way to know who's the voter. That's, that's not a dangerous conspiracy theory, is, I watched it happen. I was a part of it. So they tell me I'm crazy whenever I talk about it, they tell me that I should shut up.
Thank you, Bill.
They're going after my state car license right now for.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Going after election fraud in New York.
We're now down to commissioner comments.